The Clarksville Montgomery County School Board study session is now in order. First item on the agenda is school calendar for the third year out, Dr. Milken.
Yes, so in your board packet you will find both the inclement weather makeup plan for next school year and the proposed calendar for the 25-26 school year. The proposed inclement weather plan follows the same format that has been used for the past several years. There are five stockpile days in the calendar. If we must miss six or more, the plan describes when those days will be made up: staff development days, President's Day, or time added. As noted in the plan, makeup for days missed beyond the plan will be determined as circumstances require. For the proposed 25-26 calendar, a calendar committee comprised of teachers, staff, and administrator representatives from schools and district departments and from both teacher associations meant to develop the calendar within the framework required by law and district and board policy. In general, the calendar is relatively similar to calendars from over the past decade with one notable change: spring break. The committee reviewed CMCS' spring breaks over the past 10 years as well as the timing of spring breaks for other middle Tennessee districts. For several years, CMCS' spring break bounced between the second and fourth weeks in March, with the much earlier spring break recently moved to the first week of March. After listening to stakeholder feedback and examining average timing for spring break in our region, the calendar committee has proposed the third week in March for spring break. This timing provides a fairly even division between each of the nine weeks or the quarters, with 44 days in first quarter before fall break, 40 in the second quarter before winter break, 46 in the third quarter before spring break, and 42 in the fourth quarter before the end of the school year. The committee is hopeful that this is a good compromise on the feedback received and will set a precedent for the consistent timing of spring break in the future for stakeholders. That is all for the calendar for weather makeup. Any questions?
I left my iPad in the car, so I want to go steal it down there if something's coming. But if you let me know, are we able again the next couple of years to have the day off after Halloween like we did this year? That was a very positive thing to communicate.
Yes, and so as we look at the staff development day, we did hear very positive feedback. I need to double check, but it seems like it falls on a weekend for next year, so it is not aligned, but that is something that we have heard and we have made note of. But I do believe for next year, it probably falls on a weekend. I could be wrong, or a Friday. But yes, we did get very positive feedback about the November 1st staff development day.
Standing in order. Request third, number three, land acquisition first recital.
In your board packet you will find the land acquisition memorandum for elementary number 26. In 2022, CMCS and Montgomery County Commissioners initiated a collaborative effort to secure land to alleviate capacity concerns in our most populated areas. After numerous sites were examined and ruled out for various reasons, the joint land acquisition committee identified a willing seller in the targeted area. On September 11th, 2023, the county commissioners unanimously approved a resolution of up to $6.4 million for the survey closing costs and purchase of the property. During the past couple of months, site evaluations with due diligence in negotiations have been occurring with the seller. The total purchase amount of $5,936,500 is within the established resolution target already approved by the county commission. CMCS staff is recommending to the Board of Education approval for the purchase agreement to facilitate the construction of a prototypical elementary school for an expected opening of August 2026.
Have any comment or questions? Standing in order, move on. Number four, goal five prioritizing needs-based recruitment to fill critical shortage areas. Obviously, reference DL 3, Dr. Milken.
Yes, I would like to welcome our team from Human Resources Director of Certified Staff, Patty Kaloski, Director of Classified, Erica Christmas, and HR Coordinator Michael Thar to talk about our priority needs-based recruitment.
All right, good evening, board members, Dr. Milken. Thank you for allowing us to share information related to the progress we've made regarding recruitment and retention. So we first want to share our certified retention data. We did see an increase last year of 3.1% in retention, so we were up to 85.5%. I also wanted to share the new hires. In 21-22, we had hired 480 teachers. Last year, we hired 605 certified teachers. To date, we have hired 479. Also, we wanted to compare some of our separations from the past two school years. So we did see improvement in teachers being to teach in another Tennessee district, surrounding district, and we also saw a decrease in teachers leaving the teaching profession for our community, so that was positive. So we also wanted to compare the data from June to December, from last year to this year. So last school year, at this point, we had hired 539 teachers. We had 89 resignations. This year, so far, we have hired 479 certified teachers and we have had 75 resignations to date. We do still have some currently hard-to-fill areas such as special education, school counselors, and those courses such as algebra, geometry, and biology. We're still struggling with those. So as far as recruitment challenges go, we are seeing a decrease nationally, this is not just within our district, in educator prep programs. So people are not entering the college of education and universities like they did, like they once did. So that's creating a kind of lack of certified candidates. Also, these universities don't do as many teacher job fairs because they just don't have the students to support it, so the universities are moving to career job fairs. There's also many more opportunities in other industries for graduates. And then the backyard shortages refers to several years ago, we had many teachers coming from places like Illinois, Ohio, Indiana. They didn't have shortages there, so they would come here to Tennessee. Well, now everyone has shortages, so those teachers are coming our direction. These are just a few of the job fair, well, these are the job fairs from the spring to now that we have attended. And also, I wanted to note, Austin P. this winter, they did not even have a job fair. They canceled it. I also wanted to share just some, excuse me, some information about the results of some of our job fairs. And if you look at it, you're going to see that the best results we get are from the job fairs that we do ourselves. So in the spring, we were able to hire 31 teachers from our spring job fair. In the summer, we did a job embedded fair for the community just to offer opportunities with I Teach and Austin P., sharing information about how to take your degree and turn it into a teaching license, and we had hired 19. Yesterday, we had a job fair here. We also, we've had, I think, 10 teacher offers put out there. So we do have currently a lot of alternative licensure. We have temporary teaching permits and job embedded opportunities, which seems to be a new wave of licensure. Permits are temporary. They can be issued by the state for someone to teach anything except high school classes that have end-of-course exams, special ed, pre-peg, and elementary PE. They're good for one year, and when we do issue a permit or request a permit from the state, then those teachers, we encourage them to enter a job embedded program by the end of the school year. There's also job embedded pathways where you can take your bachelor's degree, enter into a job embedded program, which is fully online, that allows people to change careers. They can start teaching while they are working on their licensure. So the need for permits has increased over the years, and this is a perfect example. In 1920, we only had to issue four permits. In 2021, 49 permits. Last year, we issued or requested from the state 159 teacher permits. So far this year, we have had to request 194 emergency teaching permits to fill our classrooms. 93 of those are in elementary, 56 middle, and 45 in high school. We've had 12 so far transitioned to a job embedded license, and what that is our expectation. When we hire a teacher on a learning, a teaching permit, we expect them to enter into a job embedded teaching program by the end of the school year. The teacher residency program is also one of our recruitment strategies. Currently, we have 102 residents, and 34% of those are minority. We currently have 145 teachers who came from the residency program. 32% are minority. 75 are in elementary schools, 45 of those teachers are in middle schools, and two are in high schools.
Good evening. As far as our minority recruitment and retention efforts, why focus on minority recruitment? While approximately 30% among our retarded represent minority groups, 52% of CMCS students represent minority groups. 19% of our current certified staff represent minority groups. So the district will continue to focus on minority recruitment of teachers. This fall, our recruitment team visited two job fairs at two HBCUs. One at Tennessee State University in Nashville and one at Alabama A&amp;M in Huntsville, Alabama. As Patty Kaloski stated, we are facing challenges with our recruitment efforts at universities and colleges due to a lack of teacher candidates at the job fairs. We are now forced to focus our minority recruitment efforts on job embedded and teacher permit programs. So 40% of our employees currently on a permit represent minority groups. 19% of our current certified staff represent minority groups compared to 16% a year ago, which is a 3% increase. 13% of our new hires since June represent minority groups. Our minority recruitment team, our minority recruitment team is still active with assisting the district with recruitment of minority teachers. The minority recruitment team meets regularly to support recruitment efforts within the Clarksville Montgomery County District. The minority recruitment team has 16 members consisting of six building-level administrators, six members from our community, two district-level administrators, and two teachers that will be joining the team in January. The team provides up-to-date information and resources ahead of each CMCS recruiting event. The team provides supports for the events focused on mentors and mentees. Our next slide shows our meeting greet. The meeting greet was hosted by the minority recruitment team. It was held in office for the mentors and mentees. We feel this was a very successful event as we had over 40 mentees in attendance, 20 mentors in attendance. The meal was sponsored, the meal for the event was sponsored by the CMCS Education Foundation. The meeting greet gave our mentors and mentees an opportunity to meet before the start of the school year in office. As far as our minority retention efforts, in support of the Tennessee State Diversity Plan, the Diversity Mentorship Program funded by ESER 3.0 is in year two of the program. We have 20 experienced minority teachers currently providing personal and professional mentorship support to 51 other 84 first-year minority teachers. 33 out of our 84 new minority hires chose not to participate in the program due to either not being new to CMCS or feeling that enough support was already being provided by the district. A lot of our mentors, minority teachers, came from being education assistants and other classified positions, so they felt like they were already familiar with the district and did not need a mentor for the year. Our mentors provide a monthly report on their interactions, contacts, and support provided by our first-year minority teachers. Our next slide is a, we have a few quotes from some of our mentees and our mentors who are in the Diversity Mentorship Program. Our first quote is a quote from one of our first-year minority teachers, Anisha Hooker, who's a first-year teacher at Pisgah Elementary School, and she states that "The Diversity Mentorship Program has provided a safe space to communicate my daily experiences as a first-year instructor with CMCS. My mentor, Tamika Bragg, has helped me greatly by providing a positive environment, but sharing ideas that continuously shape me into becoming a better educator." Another quote comes from Anthony Carter, who's a first-year teacher at Northeast High School, and Anthony states that "The Diversity Mentorship Program has allowed me to have a supportive transition into the school year. The support I have received from my mentor makes being a first-year minority teacher just a little easier. A mentor allows for first-year minority teachers to have one person with whom I can immediately connect. I am blessed to help Coach James Figueroa as a mentor. He was my teacher and football coach back when I was a student with CMCS." And then our next quote comes from a first-year mentor of the program, Yafanda Eldridge, who's a school counselor at Kenwood High School, and she states that "My experience as a mentor has been great. Since this is an area of expertise for me, I am very excited about being a mentor and having the opportunity to support and encourage our first-year minority teachers. I believe my first year of working with CMCS would have been much better if this program was around when I started my career with CMCS." And then our final quote comes from one of our experienced second-year mentors, mentor, James Figueroa, who's a teacher at Kirkwood High School, and Coach Figueroa states that "The Diversity Mentorship Program provides ongoing social, emotional support through differentiated mentoring models that allow our first-year minority teachers to grow in the profession of teaching during their initial year with CMCS. I believe the program should continue so the district can retain more of our minority teachers. I'm a second-year mentor, and this year I am enjoying the opportunity to mentor one of my former students, the football player Anthony Carter at Northeast High School." So I think we can all see that the Diversity Mentorship Program is a successful program. It is definitely assisting our mentees, and our mentors are enjoying the opportunity to mentor our mentees. And my final slide is feedback received from first-year minority teachers. Surveys were sent to 50 first-year minority teachers that are part of the Diversity Mentorship Program in November to determine job satisfaction. Of the 26 responses received so far, 24 of our first-year, our new minority hires, which is 92.3%, stated that they're very satisfied with their job and they plan at this time to return for the next school year, and that's what the retention effort is all about, retain all of our teachers, especially our minority teachers as well. One new hire somewhat stated that she was somewhat satisfied at this time and not sure about returning for the 24-25 school year. And then we have one new hire that stated that he is not satisfied at this time and does not plan to return for the 24-25 school year. So it is obvious that two first-year minority teachers are struggling a little bit at this time. So the names and the locations of these two teachers have been provided to our employee relations specialist, Stacy Sun, and Ms. Sun will be meeting with these two teachers to see what additional support can be provided to these two teachers with hopes of retaining these two teachers for the next school year. So this is our report on our minority retention and recruitment efforts.
And board members, we'll make sure that you get an updated version of this slide. Between planning and collaborating on it, we had a few more survey responses, so we'll make sure that you get an updated version of that. All right, so classified retention. So after several years of retention decline, I'm very happy to report a small but significant gain in our retention this year. Also note for you, the increase in hiring and the decrease in separation. So two school years ago, we had 607 hires, 533 separations versus last year, we had 781 hires and 509 separations. For last year, our top reasons for separation were moving, better pay, and retirement and family issues came in at 65 each. So far this year, we have an increase in both hiring and turnover. We have hired to date 500 employees. This time last year, for some context, it was 416 during the first semester. We have had 184 separations. This time last year, we were at 156. So top trending reasons so far that I'm seeing the separations of our classified staff, we've got family issues and moving have sort of switched thoughts. So what I'm seeing is the expense of childcare is so expensive that some of our employees are just opting to stay home and take care of their children, and that would be marked under family issues. Sometimes when a spouse deploys, it is just more convenient for our employee perhaps to separate so that he or she can stay at home. And so those are what we're seeing as some top reasons so far this year. As far as recruitment, our substitutes to full-time certified and classified positions, our top recruiting tool, we've had 32% of our subs hired into these positions. As Patty mentioned, our own in-house job fairs are far more successful than our outside ones. We really value our partnerships with our community organizations, so we do not intend on backing away from those. I just highlight that so that you understand that just like with certified, we're staying the same with classified, that we're doing an outstanding job at our job fairs, and that's our, one of our top recruiting tools over some of the more, maybe less personal encounters that we have with some of our outside organizations. Our newest recruitment avenue is our workforce development partnership. To better recruit for hard-to-fill, high-needs positions with the district, Operations and Human Resources has partnered with our Adult Education Department to offer a Department of Labor-approved workforce development program. So upon completion of the certificated program, a candidate without a high school diploma or equivalent can be eligible to interview for high-needs positions of custodial staff, food service assistants, and bus drivers. Of course, to be eligible for a bus-driving position, they must also meet the DOT requirements such as age restriction and for rent license. If selected, our workforce development employees are one grade below their coworkers until, for pay, until they attain their high school equivalency diploma. Upon earning the diploma, they're moved to the same pay grade. It's not a requirement to attain the equivalency diploma, but employees are encouraged to do so under no time constraints. On behalf of Mr. Bronblay and our operations department, I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to share with you that Mr. James Wright, a recent hire under this new initiative, has attained his GED, and so has Ms. Abigail, food service assistant at Mormon Smith Elementary. Both employees have demonstrated commitment and dedication to CMCS and are truly examples of being the defining difference. Our bus driver initiatives continue to be our best for retention, and so we've got our bus driver sign-on bonuses, our referral bonus, and we have our trainee program. What's significant about the trainee program is that someone can be training and earning that CDL in the morning, for example, and in the afternoon, they're assisting on a bus as a bus A, which is also one of our high-needs positions that we're filling. And they're getting that experience there and also earning a paycheck while they're getting their training to be a bus driver for us. Some recruitment and retention challenges. Hourly wage competition continues to be something that we have to be mindful of each and every year, especially as our budget planning time rolls around. Our grant funding, that's ending, that's something that with ESER funds coming to an end, we'll have to be mindful of. I can give you an example of our permanent substitutes. They have been highly influential in increasing our sub fill rates. Sometimes between 10 and 15% of our fill rates are directly attributed to having the permanent substitutes out in our schools. So those positions are really important, and that's an example of a position that funding is running out because it's ESER 3.0 funded. We also have to continue to be mindful of our work culture shifts. As we've discussed before, and as you probably hear out in various industries, benefits are not necessarily retirement benefits, medical benefits, with some of our young adults being able to stay on their parents' insurance, maybe even live at home. Some of our benefits are not as attractive to candidates as maybe they once were, and we have candidates who are looking for work-life balance and flexible work schedules, so being able to work remotely and having those different options. So the new wave of our recruitment, we are going to continue to have certified and classified confined job fairs. We found a lot of success in that, especially since some of the people that we're targeting aren't necessarily licensed teachers at that time, but we're giving them opportunities to enter job embedded programs to become licensed teachers. Also, we're going to maintain our partnerships with the universities, but we're also going to continue to partner with Mark Campbell. Every month, someone from HR goes out to the Transition Assistance Program and speaks to those soldiers who are retiring and exiting the service and letting them know about all the opportunities within CMCS. We have differentiated pay for some of our hard-to-fill spots like math teachers, special ed teachers, and some of our CTE positions. We do want to explore the possibility of sign-on bonuses, other incentives for hard-to-fill positions, retention bonuses, and possibly tuition reimbursement. So on these job embedded programs, something like I Teach, you can get your teaching certificate for about $2,700, which is not super hard, but there's no tuition assistance. So if you're sort of struggling and going into a new career, you might not have $2,700 to put upfront. So those are just possibilities to look for recruitment. Some other continued work, we want to continue to communicate with our retired teachers on Tennessee's Return to Work incentives, where they can still earn their TCRMS pension and can also help us with some of these hard-to-fill certified positions. We want to continue to offer for our classified staff and our substitutes professional development opportunities over the summer and also throughout the school year. We have our employee communication groups that meet regularly throughout the year to offer feedback. We find that feedback to be incredibly valuable, and we want to continue to gather that and make our decisions informed based on what our communication groups are sharing with us. We want to absolutely continue to engage our minority recruitment team and our diversity mentors. We are going to need to look at what future funding looks like for those programs, but HR is committed to keeping that conversation going and looking at ways to do that. And then internal partnerships to provide structured preparation for employees seeking teacher licensure. So we have supports in place to help our teachers or candidate, teacher candidates take the Praxis test. A lot of that support is online programming so that they can get tutoring that way. We'd like to see some more of the in-person help with tips and tricks and strategy for actually taking the test and identifying individuals in our district who may have scored highly on their Praxis test and can offer some tutoring, so to speak, for those who may be struggling to pass the test. Any questions for us? Any questions for us?
Thank you for your presentation. At this time, county commissioners, councilors? School board members? I just have one question for that. Okay, Mr. Nelson.
I don't like to be our chair, when rather recognize a lot of people who help the school board and who contribute. And one person that absolutely helps everybody, every member of the school board is Mr. Tanya Lawes. I just wanted to mention her and let you guys know that she helps us tremendously. It helps us get what we need and do what we need to do and do, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. The question, I was looking, I was reading in the, listening to the news, I wasn't reading or listening to the news, and Memphis is having a problem with the cutback on the grants from the federal government over, during the COVID phase. How are we failing with those kind of grants? And do we see a problem down the road where we might call this in?
I will say that our team has done a great job over the last couple of years of really planning for this. It's no surprise that the federal dollars were going away. And so we have been having conversations for the past year or two about what that looks like and making decisions as budget time comes around each year. What are things we want to move into the budget? Where can we make cuts? What are the things that we have invested in during the COVID relief dollars that is beneficial of the return on investment that we want to continue, but that means where are we going to cut? And so we've been having those crucial conversations. The team has done a great job of expending every dollar. ESER $2, literally, we went down to the last dollar. So we have used every dollar of that. We intend to do the same with ESER 3 and being very strategic, but we are not worried because we know it's coming.
Thank you so much. Oh, the board members, Dr. Luthen.
Good evening, board members. It's hard to believe, but the last full week of the first semester is next week. As winter break approaches, I want to remind everyone, applications will be opening in January for CMCSS schools of choice and programs of choice for students. Our district offers multiple opportunities for non-traditional programs such as the Early College at TCAP, Middle College at Austin P., Spanish Immersion, More Magnet STEM, and CMCSS K-12 Virtual. We also have 10 different high school academies. Additionally, once rezoning has been completed, seats will be available across the county in elementary, middle, and high schools. We want to ensure every parent and student has choices to meet the best needs of their family. Next, I had the opportunity to speak on a panel today in Nashville that was hosted by SCOR, talking about the state of education and building a brighter future. Others on the panel included the commissioner from the Department of Labor and administrators from across the state who are also focused on ensuring students are ready for college and career. I was proud to highlight the work that's occurring in CMCSS, both with the Grow Your Own Teacher Residencies and our Greater Together Initiative with our partners at Austin P., TCAP, and Nashville State. I was most proud to emphasize how this community continues to come together to collaborate and support our educators and our students. We have a school board and community that values public education. I want to thank the school board, the county, and city elected officials, and all of our stakeholders who are committed to providing quality educations for all of our students. Mr. Garland, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Luthen. This meeting is adjourned.